Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to a special community home meeting for both the city of Davenport and the city of Davenport. Today is Monday, August 13th at 6 o'clock PM, and we're in the Waterfront Convention Center. Thank you all for joining us today. I will open our meeting for the Davenport City Council. Our community home meeting is now open. Thank you. And we found that each one of us do it a little bit differently, so we're going to, as to our normal procedures, do that. And we open our meeting with a moment of silence. And with that, I always make a comment a little bit before we do the moment of silence. You know, this is a great thing. As we find our, not only Bob and I, but also many of you, we have relationships as we got to know each other and thinking about the community in large and coming together, and the wonderful staff that put this all together, you know, we have a lot to be thankful for. So keeping that in mind, and our community coming together, and our cities coming together for the betterment of all. With that, let's take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. We would do, we'd ask now if we all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And again, in our official way, we always call a role, both in our committee of hold and our council meeting, so I'm going to ask our city administrator to call a role in her clerk role tonight as well.
Dunn?
Here.
Dignan?
McGinnis?
Here.
Ambrose?
Here.
Rossen?
Here.
Luhl?
Here.
Mattson?
Tompkins?
Griff?
Here.
Condon?
Here.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to turn it back over to my friend and colleague, Mayor Bob Gallagher, to kind of start off with the meeting process. Michelle, you want to call our room? I'm going to put them on, put them on the curb pole. I think they're going to know if they're here. I'm just stopping them off. They'll be ready to say, "Here."
Brown?
Here.
Lamar?
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Babe?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
Adamson?
Awesome. Thank you all for being here. Again, I'd like to echo the comments made by my colleague. Thank you very much to the staff who was all sitting here today in front of us, our city attorneys, our city economic development directors, and folks that, assistants of the administrator and CFO of the city of Davenport, and also lots of different hands in this, and would appreciate all the hard work that you've done over a couple year period. Our agenda items today are six. We're going to start with a discussion about a resolution approving fiber to the premises and a development agreement that would make that happen if both the cities of Davenport and Davenport. So I may turn it over to the folks who are sitting in front of us. Thank you very much. Mr. Reiter, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor Klitsch, thank you to the council in Davenport for attending this evening as well. We welcome you to Davenport. Tonight, we have a very exciting opportunity to talk through a potential development agreement that we have been working on with Metro FiberNet LLC out of Indiana, commonly known as Measure Man. First off, again, my name is Jeff Reiter. I'm the Economic Development Director for the city of Davenport. To my right is Chris Curran, and he provides legal counsel. He's our attorney here for Davenport. And to my left, I have Brandon Wright and Tom Warner representing Davenport. We've done a lot of work over the last couple of years to try to make this a reality, and we are certainly excited, not only as service providers to the cities we represent, but also as consumers. We believe we have a great opportunity in front of us, and we're happy to present to you this evening. And again, as Mayor Klitsch had stated, this is a tremendous show of regionalism to have both of these councils together. I think we were talking beforehand, and it's been something to ten years since your presentation, so a very, very exciting time. At the conclusion of this presentation as well, to my left, over here by Mr. Warner, we will have a microphone present for those in the audience who would like to speak this evening and say a few words. I believe it is Davenport's process to do so for five minutes, but we will have a microphone present if anybody would like to address the councils and talk on behalf of themselves or their constituencies. Tonight, I'd like to talk a little bit about a fiber to the premises development agreement that we have been working on, and in just a moment, I'll turn it over to Brandon here to talk a little bit further. If I could have the presentation, which please? Maybe not? Okay. At your places, I have some talking points. You've seen them in your council packets. But what we're talking about tonight is the proposed development agreements with Metro FiberNet LLC, commonly known as Metronet. It would be between both Davenport and Davenport. Each council would approve their own separate agreement, but it would be the exact same agreement with the exact same terms. The agreement is non-exclusive. This is an opportunity, thank you very much. This is an opportunity that would provide for multiple providers in the marketplace. If anyone else wishes to provide the same terms and process and product, we would be happy to entertain those opportunities as well. So while we are talking about an opportunity with Metronet this evening, this is not an exclusive agreement. We welcome other providers to talk to us as well. And again, the goal is to provide a full fiber to the premises network to all of Davenport and Davenport. And while it's not in your packet this evening, you will see it in your packets whenever this is up for discussion and vote at your council meetings. There will be a map outlining that this is for the entire city of Davenport and the entire city of Davenport. We're very, very excited about that. And this will be service delivery to both business and residential consumers in both markets as well. So we hope that this will provide an opportunity for all to take part in. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Brandon to talk a little bit about the terms.
Great. Can you hear me?
I want to.
Better. So the agreement that you have before you this evening is really laid out into multiple sections. Part of that is obviously outlining the obligations of the provider, and it's in a type of size of once again, it's a non-exclusive agreement, and so it is written so that other providers, which should take advantage of this particular agreement, they would need to follow these same principles and these same obligations that are outlined for you. As we go through kind of those different obligations, first of all, is that the provider will be required to build a full fiber network, 100% fiber network, in both communities, both in Davenport and in Davenport, and that they would need, and obviously, all residential and business areas would be covered throughout both cities. There are some exclusions that are included within that agreement. There are areas where, if currently a fiber to the premise network already exists, that they would not be required to build in those areas. There's also a exclusion for areas where there's unreasonable high make-ready costs as well. So if there isn't the appropriate level of density in a particular area, or if there are other costs related to things like poles and things like that that get to be unreasonably high, as kind of set forth in the agreement itself, those would be certain exclusions, but otherwise, it would be full community built in both, again, in both cities. There's also a requirement that the provider has to maintain at least 10 maintenance, 10 employees in the area in combination with this agreement. So there are five propositions that would be added to this area as a result of the agreement itself.
Chris and I are going to discuss a little bit of the terminology and the language relative to construction planning and scheduling. First off, the construction schedule calls for substantial completion within three years. Both cities, we anticipate with Davenport being a little smaller geographic area, it may take a little bit less time, but within three years, the entire construction area will be built out, and we expect then with that, we have terms in there for substantial completion of 90% within that three-year window. It's difficult to lock down full 100% completion in that three years because the sizes of the cities may grow, the number of constituents may grow, so substantial completion of 90% has been set as that number. In addition, we have obligated Metronet to a construction communications plan. Myself, our city electrician, and a member of our IT staff had the opportunity to travel to Lafayette, Indiana, and actually talk to them about their communications planning, their site remediation, their restoration plans, and we actually got to see how they deploy in the city of Lafayette. We're very, very optimistic that what they're going to be providing is a very expeditious process, and actually, a process that really takes into account the consumer, the end user. So in doing that, just a couple of the highlights of what this construction communication plan looked like. At least 30 days prior to the commencement of construction in residential areas, the provider will send out a detailed letter to those residents that are affected advising them that they will be coming in roughly a month. About 14 days in advance of construction, they will send out a follow-up notice that will provide them with more information about them and their service, and that they'll be coming in approximately two weeks. And then three days in advance, they'll have a deployment team out there throwing yard darts, sending yard darts into the yards, letting people know that in roughly three days, we're going to be in your neighborhood, doing what we've talked about for the last 30 days. So hopefully, these three communications over a 30-day period let people know what's going on. But in addition to that, they also have a phone number with a local representative, and actually, a website as well, where they can check in and see what's happening, and they will know exactly where these folks are going to be and what they're going to be doing, and when they will be doing so. That website and that phone number also have the opportunity for constituents to call in and discuss concerns they have, either about restoration, or to talk about problems they have with their service, and they have a very good staff on the other end of the line who will help them through anything as far as remediation or restoration concerns that they may have. So we're very excited about what they offer as well. In Lafayette, when we were there, we saw three phases of construction. The first phase was a neighborhood that was currently under construction, and I liken it to ants on sugar. They send out a team of roughly 25 to 30 folks in a neighborhood, very, very quickly deploy. You'll see a lot of schools, a lot of condom going in the ground, and it's an impediment for those residents for roughly seven to 10 days in that construction area. Once it's done, it's done. At the completion of that, we saw a neighborhood that was just complete and had been done for about two days. They came back in, they laid sod, and they restored all of the properties to the way they were. They provided great restoration, and it was new sod, but it was very, very complete, and you did not know that they were there. We then had seen a neighborhood that had been done for about two and a half weeks. The sod had been mowed, the restoration was complete, and we had no knowledge. If you didn't know that they were there, you would have had no knowledge that there ever was anybody there. So we're very, very confident that what they're delivering is a high-quality restoration process, which we're very, very excited about. The initial products and services are fiber to the premises. They provide gigabit service. You can take advantage of any level of that that you would like along the way. In addition, they have the DVR, the telephone, and the internet, and the cable television options that you may be accustomed to at your home. They will also set up a retail store, which will operate at least 40 hours a week. We expect it will be a standard business operation, where you can go in and pay your bills, you can test their products and services, and you can talk to them about issues that you may be having. So we like the fact that they have a nice local office here with people that are on the ground here, that they can talk to local folks, and you can talk to local lead. The other part of the construction model, which will get this deployed very, very quickly, is they have the opportunity to locate aerially or underground as poles are available. So they've already established a relationship with MidAmerican Energy, and they've started that construction process with them. If there are poles present, they're going to deploy on those poles. If those poles in the future do go underground for whatever reason, whether it's for the cleanliness of the neighborhood, or MidAmerican has a reason for locating underground, at such time, Metronet will go underground with them. They will not be deploying poles for the sake of their individual building, as it stands. In new areas, they will be deploying underground, and areas where there's new developments that we are aware of, we will work with them to let them know of these new areas, so before sod is laid, before construction commences, they can get their infrastructure in the ground. So we're pretty confident we have a firm plan, we have a good partner, someone that's willing to work with us. They have already emphasized that they will be working with our community development staffs on a daily basis, providing them with construction planning for those days, so we will know for our permitting, for our right-of-way needs, and for our inspection processes, we will know where they are at on a daily basis, which is very, very exciting as well. All of their contractors and employees, when they are doing the construction, wear Metronet armbands, they provide magnet identification on their cars, letting folks know who they are, what they're doing, and why they're there. With that, I want to turn it over to Chris here to talk a little bit about our construction agreement, which is a separate document.
Thank you, Jeff.
Items three and four here, Jen, right?
That's correct. I just wanted to talk about briefly the why there are two agreements, or maybe just to clarify those two agreements. Essentially, as Jeff set forth quite well, the way in which Metronet does business and how they do their build-out and how they make sure that it's done in a way that we can all be proud of is set forth in the construction agreement or the letter agreement. That agreement describes how they do business and what they need to do, what their obligations are in the construction of their build-out. The development agreement sets forth the incentives that we will talk about. You cannot have, the development agreement does not stand on its own. If the development agreement is passed, the construction agreement will also be in place. So essentially, I just want to be clear that the development agreement does not stand on its own. It needs the construction agreement. Construction agreement could theoretically stand on its own, but it's, we're bringing this forward together. The incentives will, as we'll talk about here in a second, will ensure a full build-out of the city in a time manner in which we're all, in the three-year time, the three-year time window that Jeff and Brandon indicated. So it's a little confusing to have two agreements, but the construction agreement is how they do business, and you cannot have the development agreement without the construction agreement. So that's really the primary point.
So briefly, we'll talk about the obligations of the two municipalities to this development agreement. And please, by all means, if you have questions, please let us know. The obligations that the cities will be providing will be an up-to-20-year economic development grant period. 40 payments every six months as taxes are collected, those grant payments would be issued. Their rebates on what they pay in, so this is one thing I really think is important to clarify and make note of. We are not providing any taxpayer dollars other than their taxes paid to them. The constituents are not going to be providing taxpayer dollars to this development or this agreement. What that looks like in Davenport is a grant capped at up to $11.675 million over that 20-year period. In Davenport, the grant is capped at $3.375 million over that same period as well. These numbers are based on the geographic area, the number of constituents in your communities. It's weighted in that way just because of the sheer size of Davenport and the sheer size of Davenport. There's a lot more fiber going in the ground in Davenport. There's also the request for blanket permitting. This is something that we tend to do in Davenport, and I'm certain that it's a pretty common practice, where there's a neighborhood, we do not require individuals to, or excuse me, companies to come in and get individual permit for each and every household that exists in that neighborhood. They've asked for construction permitting in a blanket scenario that allows them to go in and do a neighborhood all at once. We think it's efficient, we think it helps with practice and their process, and we think it'll help them in a very, very expeditions way if we can offer blanket permitting. When that does occur, it will occur with our community development staff and our permitting staff to make sure it's done in an expeditions manner, and it's done very transparently and among the board. So we do expect that the blanket permitting will be issued by our commonwealth staff to have a full knowledge of where that construction is going to take place and when. Once again, in closing, very quickly, relative to this offering, we hope that this provides a level playing field for everyone. Any provider that wishes to embark upon this development agreement, the terms set forth, we're willing to talk to them. We hope that this provides a great opportunity for our residents and our business community. We know that there's been areas of our town that have requested better service. We hope that by doing so, we've provided a great amenity and great new service for all of our constituents, and again, as consumers as we all are, this could be a real good thing for all of this area. I have no further questions, comments, or presentation. I know that there's representation from Metronet in the crowd this evening, and I believe before we open it up to public comment, I believe Kathy Scheller from Metronet here would like to say a few words about their company.
Hi, Kathy. Welcome.
Mayor Gallagher, Mayor Klitsch, members of council and staff, my name is Kathy Scheller, and I'm an external affairs for Metronet. First and foremost, let me just say that this is, I've been working in so many municipalities throughout Illinois, Indiana, and Kentucky as well, this, for two communities to come together the way that you have, to offer your constituents' choice in the marketplace, to offer them competition, is a very exciting time for us to be a part of that. When we're doing our due diligence process to find out what communities we want to invest millions of dollars in, what we look for is city leadership, and I just want to let you know that what you've done together has really been profound with our leadership as well. Metronet was founded, I'm going to give a very brief, Jeff did a very nice job explaining everything, so I'm at a loss for words, but Metronet started in 2004. We're part of a group that went and provided broadband in Indiana in rural communities. At that time, that was what was the big thing, to connect rural communities. Through our success in Indiana, we've grown over the last 10, 15 years to a point where we are today, whereby we're expanding our footprint. Currently, we have close to 40 communities that are part of the Metronet footprint. We pass over 200,000, 220,000 homes and businesses, and we have a customer base that's approximately 75,000. Through that work, we've learned a lot along the years, especially since 2004. A couple of things I do want to just go ahead and echo is our amazing construction communication plan. This includes a website that is available for all of your residents. Once these agreements get signed, a resident on Davenport or Davenport will go to this site, which will be in the letters in all ways that we reach out. They will click on Davenport, they will click on Davenport, wherever they live. They'll be able to see a map where we're constructing. I also encourage them to go to that construction communication website as well, because at the top, there's a place that they can actually see what it looks like to deploy fiber. Metronet follows power. We work closely with MidAmerican. If there's poles, our fiber optics go across the poles. If there's a grid in the ground behind a home and then that he's with, we will follow that as well. One of the things that I've learned that's very important along the way is that restoration process. We take that extremely seriously, because we believe the customer experience with Metronet begins during deployment. We're very adamant about that. We will have a project lead come to Davenport and Davenport and be in charge of the entire project. What we will do is we go through a neighborhood, go through an area, we design the entire both cities, we design them ahead of time. When we go through, what we will do is our construction people don't just go through the neighborhood, then go back and restore. They restore as they go. So we don't have a bunch of poles or that type of thing. Within 48 hours of going through that neighborhood, that's when we restore. We have an outside plant engineer that is with Metronet that will follow these crews to make sure that they are doing their job and are up to our standards of that type of restoration. We've been extremely well, the construction communication piece has been extremely well-received in all of the 40-plus municipalities that we've been involved in. The most successful communities that I've worked with are the ones that really help us push that process out. We're not asking people to buy Metronet at this time, we're trying to educate them on what a true fiber optic infrastructure looks like, especially during the deployment phase. Once again, we really believe that this is the way of the future, to have two cities come together in order to provide their residents' choice and competition. It's good for everybody, it's good for the marketplace, and we look forward to working with you and communicating well to make Davenport and Davenport gigabit communities.
Thank you very much. How about a council person of either side who has any questions from staff? Kathy, while we're here, is there?
Can you hear me? I can hear myself. I love this whole idea of we're really behind all as far as making fiber-ready cities, so this is a wonderful plan. But I just have a few things I want to ask, just for clarification, three things actually. So first is, is this going to be a concurrent build-out, meaning you will be building out in Davenport as well as Davenport at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. The second thing is, can you give me an example of, and I'm tying this into the comment that was made earlier about seeing neighborhoods new construction and recently built, and I know in Davenport, we have a lot of older areas of the city, so my concern just lies around when you talk about, I read through the whole contract, so unreasonably high make-ready costs. Can you provide an example of what kind of geographical territory that would be specifically?
You know, I can't really speak to that exact issue, but what I think that what we're talking about is if that pole is full, or if that, we have to, that's something that we have to really look at. So if it's an old pole and it's full, we would have to really look at the cost in replacing that pole.
Okay, so as far as, Jeff might have a little bit of that for you, councilman.
I'll just also say, we've never had an issue with that in any other community that we've been in 40-plus, so I just think that that's part of doing it.
One thing, our IT staff is in the crowd, and really don't mean with this, one thing we learned is, especially in the northeast quarter of Davenport, where you see some larger lots, you see new construction that might have expensive driveways, or the run might be exponentially long, where there's not a lot of service from point A to point B, so you have a number of folks here, and then you have a number of folks at the other end. There's a lot of make-ready costs to get from point A to point B, or to run from a street up to, say, an 800-foot driveway to get to a house. There may be unreasonably high make-ready costs in scenarios like that. I believe it's Metronet's model where there's densely populated areas, a number of households, those are probably areas where they're going to see a lot of opportunity to move very quickly. So in midtown Davenport or an area, some older areas, you may see employment there possibly the quickest, because there's a lot of houses or a lot of residences very quickly. So the high make-ready costs come into play whenever there's longer runs without a make ready tab along.
That's great. Since we come back referring to you here. Our older neighborhoods with higher populations will get serviced faster. Did you hear that? Yeah, you take notes on that? Before, yeah, I was just, I just want to make sure, the earlier comments were about new build and recent construction, and I just want to make sure with, you know, the history of, at least in Davenport, our older neighborhoods not having as much economic infrastructure, that we, one, don't ignore them, and provide them the same level of service that they got better than, you know, everybody else. So I just want to make sure that's on the record. And then last thing, I just noticed on the part of the construction agreement, and I assume this is in here, because this has probably been running to you, but it says, you know, after boring the street curb, the sidewalks, provider notwithstanding foregoing, in no event will a provider be required to repair, replace, or restore any personal property of a property owner that was improperly located in a utility easement. So my question is really for clarification, as you're going through a neighborhood and kind of identifying where this line is going to go, is that something you would forewarn the property owner, that they may have costs, that they have something built out in the easement?
I mean, I believe that when we give them that notification that we're going to be here, we can answer those questions at that time, and all of that information is on our construction communication website, yes.
Okay, as far as, oh, well, what I just read is on construction.
Yes.
But just for the property owner that may have personal property in the easement, they won't be surprised, they'll have plenty of time to know that.
Yes, we'll let them know. I mean, we're going to start notifying them that we're coming through within 30 days. They'll start to see those locates there too, so if they have something in that easement, they will know that pretty soon if we're not there.
So it's not for you or me to know.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, being a gigabit city is something that I know Davenport and Davenport have been talking about, working towards a long time, so it's kind of exciting to think that the sunrise might be just over the horizon for us. A couple of questions, I'm wondering, is this the largest build-out then for your company?
It is not, like something in Kentucky that we're just going to.
Second question, I'm just, I'm kind of curious about the using the, in communities that don't have underground electric service, doing overhead, is that purely an economic decision in terms of underground versus overhead?
It is not. What we've done in all the communities that we've worked in typically follow power. So however the power grid is set up in a particular neighborhood, that's how we follow it.
Just thinking in terms of what things look like, it would sort of look better underground than putting more stuff above ground. So is it, it does become a cost issue then, I presume?
I would, in my opinion, it's probably cheaper to do that, but what we have always done is followed power, and a strand of fiber is rather very, very small, and it's in the communication space on the home.
Okay. Thank you.
Just quickly, when we talk about expansive services, and can you put into perspective from a cost-benefit standpoint to the consumer, what they might be offered? Is it too early to talk about what this might cost them per month in terms of options, or do you have some sense of what the pricing might be and what they might receive for the money?
Sure. You can also go online and just look up Metronet, and we do have a listing of our pricing. One thing that I like to tell, we're so confident in this type of infrastructure that there are no contracts for our residential customers. So we encourage people to try all three of our products, fiber optic and the internet, the phone, as well as the video product if they so choose. You don't have to bundle things to get something else, that type of... You don't have to bundle things to get something else, that type of thing. Our lowest offering is one hundred meg, and that typically goes for forty-nine, goes for forty-nine ninety-five. We offer all the way up to a gig, and that goes for sixty-nine ninety-five. So those are just a sampling of our internet prices. Our video pricing, our phone pricing are similar with market. We like to say as far as pricing goes, that you get more for the same, or sometimes you get more, especially if you're with.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rafferty, yes, thank you very much, appreciate it.
I'm personally looking forward to fiber to my home, but my question is, can somebody say, don't come on my property? Can they choose to have, to keep over into their home?
Yeah, yeah, so what we're doing, especially during this deployment, is we're working in the public right-of-way, the public easement. So if somebody chooses not to have Metronet, we would never, you know, connect them to the property.
So they have to actually ask for service to go through that?
Correct, correct.
Easement up to their home?
Yes.
Got you. Thank you.
Yeah, one point of clarification on that, this is opening the door, this is providing the opportunity for another service to work with. We don't have to, and actually, there's language in our development agreements that state that if in fact a private sector constituent does not want them on their property, they can't go in. So we're very, very confident that the management structure is, provides for the constituents' desires as well.
Here, we've got some remarks, yes, Councilwoman Rafferty.
Thank you. You talk about basically going, within the right-of-way, probably creating some sort of pedestals. Is there a cost to the consumer to hook from the pedestal to the house? Do you know that?
So when we're in the neighborhood and we do a drop to their home...
Yep.
There's a nine ninety-five typically installation fee at that time.
This side, is there anybody here who has a question or comments? Thank you, Councilwoman.
Can you speak to maintenance? It seems like you're going to put a lot of these on poles with power lines. And here in Midwest, we seem to have a lot of storms, I would say, and take them out and look at our response. Who have storms?
Yes, yes. So one of the things that we're really proud of with our network is it's very redundant, whereby we actually are coming in, we're actually coming in and we're going to rain Bednorf and Davenport. So if something like that happens and power goes down, or something is cut, we're able to take all of it and go on the other ring. We do maintain, we run trucks twenty-four-seven. As mentioned earlier, we do have a regional presence here. We'll have it on, typically, we'll have a DM or someone in charge of the area, so our response timing is very, very good. We're very cognizant of that.
Anybody else? Question, response.
Your Honor, if I may, if I may, one question, and maybe a random. You know, one of the discussions all of Davenport, Alden, have discussed is, and Alden Ross has made comments related to it as well, it doesn't matter what the take rate, anticipated take rate would be, it's a build-out for everybody regardless. Is that correct? Am I correct in that?
Correct, and being mayor, a lot of the questions in the comments, certainly because Davenport at one point was considering developing its own fiber facility, and at that point, the interest in the take rates was a lot more significant to that point, obviously, because of State of Davenport as a whole. In this case, you have a private builder with a private managed system on that, so the take rate really is up to them to be able to get on that part of that. So we're not really looking at, at a certain level of take rate, they would be allowed to come into the community, build out the community, in consent of the development agreement, and then obviously, they're motivated to try and sign up as soon as they can.
One other question, because many people are comfortable with the current service, and as part of that, I think the issue here is the open trade opportunity and the competitions, which I think we all think is good. Explain that again, how anybody could do what this is all about? I want to make sure we're all aware of that.
Yeah, so this, really, the purpose for this economic development agreement is, is to have a gig city, right, a bigger city. The idea is that our, both of our communities flourish and do very well if we have more fiber in the ground for that. So this economic development agreement really is set up to encourage companies to come in and develop fully fiber systems, fiber optic systems, fiber to the home, fiber to the premise type of systems. As they, as they do that, obviously, it provides for greater internet service, more reliability. Fiber is just a great product, offers tremendous seats for that. So the purpose of it really is to develop a fiber, a fiber system. Anyone who's interested in developing a fiber system can come and take advantage of the same terms and conditions that are outlined through this development agreement.
Thank you. Alden Rivers, you have a question?
Yeah.
Please.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I'd like to start off by saying, I think it's really great that we're seeing this come forward as a collaborative, collaborative effort between Davenport and Bednorf. I know over the past few years, there's been a great push for that, and what we've found is that that tends to be more difficult than you think it would be. But matching up these two markets in this instance seems to make quite a lot of sense. And I certainly prefer this model over the model that was brought to us around two years ago, where it was municipally owned by the city of Davenport. So I think this is a more fiscally responsible way to get fiber to every home. A lot of my questions have been answered, but one that I had, and I think it piggybacks on the one that the mayor just asked, is that, so say that a fiber company wants to build fiber in, build out an area of fiber in Davenport, but they don't want to take part of this agreement, can they do that?
Yes, yes. So depending on the type of utility they're developing, whether it's just internet or offering time to triple play, there would be some different rules that apply in those types of situations, but yes, anyone can come in and begin building out the network in Davenport. The advantage here is the timeframe, the three-year build-out community-wide, that's the reason for the development agreement, there's quite some incentives on there.
Correct. We get, we get the entire city built out within, two cities built out within a timeframe, and we get everybody, not just the neighborhoods with the high take rates. So just a quick follow-up on that, I'm assuming, and you can just agree if this is correct, that those companies that have already built out fiber network, works to Davenport network, will be able to continue to operate normally, all these activities. Thank you.
Chris, when we talk about incentives, can you please explain to us, I think we're all using some lexicon in understanding that property tax rebates in tax engine financing type arrangements, this is different. The utility tax that might get rebated up to a cap for a period of time is different. Can you touch on that point, please?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. You're correct, the incentive, as described in this agreement, is unique to this type of business. It's not, it's a rebate of personal property taxes, which is unusual. These personal property taxes are essentially assessed in Deloitte under Chapter four thirty-three, and the only, the only incentive that is, that would be rebated to the provider would be those amounts actually received by the respective city. So whatever, the tax is essentially on the fiber that's under the ground, which is personal property as opposed to real property. And the only incentive that would be required to go to the provider would be that money that comes to the city from Deloitte relating to the amount of fiber that they are assessed. So the cap is not to exceed number. They don't know what the assessment would be, but we know that it won't be more than the not-to-exceed number, and we do know also that the only incentive that they will get is that amount that is actually received by the city, the city alone, not the school district, or the county, only the city.
Thank you. Did that raise more questions, Councilor?
Thank you very much. Yes, and I could ask, really, Chris again, or to whomever. So if another fiber company would come in and build out, would they also, would be more tax on that, so we'd have a very, very expensive fiber build out, and they would also get eleven million dollars? Is that correct? They built to the same spec, or is this only if it's built out in three years?
Thank you, Alden, I think the question is a good one, and it's only the amounts, if another provider comes in and wants to breach in terms of the development agreement, which requires a full build-out of each city in that timeframe, they would also have access to these incentives, but it would be for those amounts of fiber that they put in the ground. So they would also be subject to this personal property tax, they would also be entitled to that same incentive. Again, it's only those amounts that would come to the city for this other provider's fiber that goes in the ground.
Yes. Councilwoman Rafferty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Jeff or Chris, we talked about the permit process, but are there any bonds posted by Metronet in regards to, one of the things that people worry about, and I know you talked about your company and taking care of the yards and everything, but I know one of the first concerns people are going to have is, is my yard going to be fixed up to my expectations? So I'm just curious if there are any bonds that are posted by Metronet in regards to the work that they do.
Thank you, Alden, speaking for Bednorf. We've declared in this agreement that the provider has to comply with all laws, federal, state, city, including our ordinance requires the networking right-of-way, that they permit and that they post bond. So not only are they subject to the terms of the contract, and we have, if for some reason they didn't live up to those obligations, we would have a breach of contract issue, but there is a bond under our ordinances, they are required to comply with our ordinances. There's indemnification, if they don't comply with laws, that will be another hook. There's also indemnity for property damage, so I think we're in a better position here than we kind of have in other situations.
I think we may fumble that up. Tom, are you willing to maybe...
Thumbs up.
We got two thumbs up.
Same thing. I was pretty sure expeditions that I was going to do here. Any other questions for us? Okay, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I just, you know, would like, maybe I could, on the record, could you talk about your company's history, your experience with union or non-union labor, collective bargaining units within the, perhaps employees that are left in the city? Just a little bit about that, if you would. Thank you.
My honor. You know, as far as, as far as the crews that we use, Metronet uses in the deployment factor, we're agnostic as to whether, you know, those particular contractors are union or non-unions. We're agnostic to that. As far, however, we do hold them to the standards, our standards of restoration and construction wholeheartedly for that. As far as our organization as a whole with Metronet, we've never been involved in any kind of union, or anybody asking for a union, or any kind of collective bargaining issues. That's because, I believe, what we have, we provide competitive wages, benefits, as well as have an associate model culture in our organization whereby our people that work for Metronet, we look at them as our associates. We don't look at them as people just coming in to get a paycheck. So we've never had anybody ask us about unions, or have ever participated in any type of collective bargaining.
Any others? Your Honor?
I think we were, oh, Alden Ross, sorry. Sorry, yeah, I do have one follow-up. I highlighted your contract, I forgot the start area. One section, it's actually the same section as far as network extension, I really just want clarification. It says, "For no more than ten percent of the homes in the build-out territory, provider reserves a right to require one-time construction fees and/or pre-selection from potential residential customers." Now that part makes sense to me, I think, because you're talking about in a geographic territory, talking with people, making sure they're going to take the service before you do the build-out to kind of control costs, is that accurate?
Typically, what that, what I believe the language that you're referring to within that has to do with if we're going to expand. So when we provide Bednorf and Davenport with our initial deployment map, let's say there's an area that was not on an initial deployment map, if that area, if they want us to extend or build, that's when those terms apply, I believe.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. My understanding of fiber to the premises means fiber to the house, to a box in the house. So you're building up, as you go down the street, there are ten houses on the block, you're going to put fiber to each house, right? Not to, not just to the right-of-way?
If they choose to take our services, the strand of fiber will then be pulled from our terminal box to their home. If they do not choose to take our services and stay where they are, we will not bring our fiber to their home directly. But if they choose Metronet services, they will have a direct fiber connection, they will have their own fiber line that goes to the house.
So when you run that fiber to the house, then that's when you charge them an installation service?
Yes, and I think it's a very minimal service. Again, you could go to our website and look at that, but it's very minimal, but that's part of an installation fee. It's usually like nine ninety-five or something like that, one-time fee.
Thank you.
I think, well, please. Well, I think in our, in our typical procedure, if there's anybody from the public that would like to address this issue, we would, again, I don't believe you might fool the courtroom at this point, but come up and speak to us as a group, and please limit your comments to five minutes, so if there's anybody who would like to speak, please feel free to do that. Yeah, there's a microphone right over here.
Do you tip it to that, state the name and address?
Yeah, name and address, please, if you would, if we typically just...
Hello, Ranger Arnold from Davenport Island. I had a quick question regarding the service. If this is going to be built out over the next three years, is there a possibility that this can be bought out from the company itself and used as a municipality, or not?
I don't think that's...
So this is just going to be completely private, there's absolutely no chance of possibly having the city or cities buy this network out and use it as a municipal utility, correct?
That's not the intent of this agreement.
Okay.
But I would assume that at some point, everything would be for sale, right? Metronet will own these assets, all this stuff, so they could presumably sell that infrastructure to the city, but that is not the intent of the agreement.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you very much. Actually, I have one more question. Would the cities of Davenport and Bednorf be interested in a useful broadband service? Thank you.
I think the idea here is to have the provider come to make sure that it is, neither one of us, I think, at this time, want to have the public utility that provides that service, we've got the provider here pursuant to this agreement, and other providers pursuant to the agreement, that would be able to provide that service, essentially.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rusty Entersuber, resident of Davenport, on the sixth board. We seem to have a lot of good points covered with respect to the development and the construction agreement, so I'd like to jump ahead to about three years from now, and I'd like to possibly, if we don't hear it tonight, maybe we'll hear it in subsequent city council meetings, I'd like to hear Metronet's discussion of what is their availability in terms of how reliable is their service, what's their goal versus actual, how do they monitor that, can they even monitor down to the individual terminal level, like in the household? What geographic level do they respond to? I also am interested in their maintenance of performance, how do they sustain their performance during peak usage periods? And I ask these questions because these are the shortcomings we experience today, which may be a reason to look at the service. And then the other question is, is what do they do to make sure the customers are satisfied or made whole again when they do not meet their goals for reliability and performance? there was a 90% criteria put in for substantial build-out, but I'm interested in what their experience is in their other communities with respect to the percentage of the cities that is actually covered, especially with this unknown, unreasonably high make-ready cost clause. So I'm interested in, out of the geographies that are available, and obviously we don't put it into open space, but if we've got homes and offices and industrial parks, what percentage of them does MetroNet finally cover? And these are questions I'd just like to think that we'd be talking about as we continue this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And I think one of the things, Jeff, I don't know if you're prepared to feel comfortable, I know that you've done some research into the communities where MetroNet currently provides the service, so maybe speaking to people who use the service or the community leaders in those communities as opposed to, for instance, MetroNet, to get what those responses are. If you might share a little bit of that, and some of the questions you raise, we'll certainly listen to MetroNet and then give us an opportunity and then come at least to answer some of those, because I think you make a good point. But I think we feel pretty good about it. Jeff, why don't you tell us how we feel about it?
We feel great, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Just anecdotally, we have done a lot of reconnaissance in other margins where they exist and residing. A couple of scenarios that MetroNet has embarked upon. Crawfordsville, Indiana tried to establish their own fiber utility in their community. It failed substantially. MetroNet came in, bought out the assets that were already established by Crawfordsville, and actually fully built out that community and provided them with the network that they had hoped to establish. So it was an opportunity that the city tried to take on. It did not go so well, and MetroNet did come in and provide that service. In Lafayette, we did have a subsequent meeting, only with the city officials. We met with our electrician engineer, ED director, and the city administrator. So after we met with MetroNet, we did want to get the municipalities' take on how they are aware of it. You know, anecdotally, you could say they're a good partner, et cetera. They said that they are very clean, they are very crisp, they do provide great follow-up to their constituents. One thing they had hoped to accomplish was a rate or a market share, if you will, in a period of three years. They wanted to hit a market share of about 45% at that time. I don't know what MetroNet's business model is today, but they had captured in just over a year's time 60% of the market share in Lafayette. They were hoping to do so over a longer period of time, but they only hoped to accomplish 45%. So the take rate, if you will, was very, very high, very, very fast. So everything we've heard from Lafayette, where they were very, very well-established, was good reviews, constituents that were very satisfied with the service, and a take rate that was substantially higher, substantially lower. But yeah, these are all, those are very good questions we've received recently.
As it would be with any other private business in town, but that's their business model, and though we are giving incentives to anybody who could build us out to substantial completion at 90%, most cities and communities, that's important. Get the asset around.
Is there anybody else who would like to hear? If so, please come on up to the front. There's a microphone here. If you could please state your name, your address, if you'd like to hear from me.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jura Richardson. I live at 2303 East 28th Street in Davenport, Iowa. I have a couple of questions. Number one, I want some clarification, insulation fees, first-time insulation fees for homes that have an air clarify or optic service support, how that would proceed. The second issue I have is that I'm currently a MediaCom subscriber. I've been with them, actually, since I moved here to Quad Cities. The main problem I have with them is that even though their service is pretty fast, and I see to be one of the few people that have a reliable service from them, their data caps are a huge problem, and they use them as a tool to hurt people into higher and more expensive tiers of human service that don't actually need. For example, I only need a...
Excuse me, if I may, I think, as opposed to talking about some other provider, I think we typically avoid that.
Okay.
So maybe just looking at maybe what you're looking for and concerns that we might have.
Okay, well, yeah, my main concern is that I'm hoping that, because this agreement apparently seems to have been worked for already, I'm hoping that for future efforts that we also look at ISVs and try to encourage them not to have data caps, put it that way. Does that make sense? More to the point.
So data caps is an insurance, right?
Yes, it is. Also, I was unable to find pricing on the website. I'm pretty glad that the MetroNet representative for Sierra had that. And another question for her, too. Are they going to be using independent contractors or direct fire installers? And I think that was everything, all the questions I had. Independent contractors, okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I've got to ask the ideas before you retire, then.
Fred, Steve Van Dyke, City of Bentonmore, resident, 4555 LA Drive. Full disclosure, I used to be an economic development guy for the City of Bentonmore, so it's always a pleasure to be here. I'll stand in five minutes for sure. Twenty years ago, though, the one switch that happened to be downtown Davenport went out. No businesses, no residents could call in, nobody could call out. We were in a quandary, and there were huge meetings, senators, how can we solve this problem? So this is a wonderful day today. This is another way to get in and out as far as communication with the Quad City region. It's going to help the chamber and all your references, reference to economic development. Wonderful, wonderful city. I don't have a question, but really a comment, and it goes back to some of the calls we used to receive when I was around, which was, "I just bought a $100,000 lot, and I've built a $500,000 home, and I can't get the services that I need." One of the things that business development parks always stress is have everything at the red. Don't say that you're going to have it two days from now or four years from now. So I understand the cost-benefit thing, but I hope the communities have the ability to have some impact into, let's not wait until the entire subdivision has to be built out before that fiber goes in. So thank you very much, and great work, everybody. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jeff. Yeah, thank you for your work on this issue before. You retired, this is some of those issues, and you carried a lot of water on this issue. Jeff?
Yeah, I did. I echo your sentiments, Mayor. One of the first things that I took on when I took this role was working with Mr. Van Dyke, and a very quick learning curve, and a lot of education in a very short window of time. And we've all heard Steve say from time to time, "We need fiber, we've got fiber, we got..." So he really allowed me an opportunity to learn from him and get some knowledge. So to Steve, thank you. Second, his question slash comment about, "I just bought a $100,000 house and built a $500,000 home." We're very excited in Bentonmore because we provided the field engineers at MetroNet some maps of some highly questioned and highly concerning areas to us. One being our industrial park down where Olympic Steel resides, Claire Manufacturing, et cetera. The other being, I mean, northeast Bentonmore, there's a lot of new house, new houses going up, new construction. They're not small, but these areas have been underserved, and we provided them maps to make sure that in Bentonmore, and I know Davenport did the same thing, you are going to be able to provide service to these areas. We didn't want them to come into central city, take the low-hanging crew, and then just simply rely on that as their bread and butter. We have needs, and we wanted to make sure that those needs were met. And again, kudos to Steve for laying that off for me, because this was a huge learning curve, but there were certain needs and demands that we were placing on MetroNet to make sure they were met. And his comment did not fall on deaf ears. This was a very, very strong issue to be addressed with MetroNet, and we do want those that do not have service to be served.
Also, the incentives and the impact of it, neat, right?
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to hear?
Fernando Uchek, with ION Communications. Is it allowed to have other providers make comments? And we are based out of Cedar Rapids, Davenport, Cedar Rapids, Cedar Rapids, Miami, and I want Iowa City, Dubuque, Cedar Falls, and also several municipal utilities around the state. So my first question is, are any Iowa companies contacted or considered before this agreement? I'm just sort of making a formulation.
We were contacted by MetroNet, so we...
You were contacted by MetroNet?
This is basically the framework of agreement that they came to you with. Well, we've negotiated this for two years, but, for instance, if your company was interested in building out the cities of Bentonmore and Davenport to substantial completion in three years, you could take advantage of the agreement. That's the whole thing about this is, we didn't go to a single company. It's more like a request or proposal or request, because we laid the groundwork if you're interested.
Great. Yes, we have reached out to both cities, but quicker again, I know these things take a long, long time, so. I'll get into it, so the 90%, if we were interested, we are actually in the process of building fiber route through both Bentonmore and Davenport, that we speak will be done in September. If we were to choose to say we want to come into Davenport, that doesn't apply, correct? It has to be 90% for...
Oh, cities.
Cities, okay. Okay. All right, so my only comment there, I think you now limit yourself to natural providers, which if you like natural providers, that's fine, so. And I'm going to say MetroNet's a bank company, and I know that they do very successfully. The economic development grant, then, as you reach that 11.9 million, is that, that's the cap? So if another provider were to come in, there's, if MetroNet is taking that, or then they get a second 11.9 million?
A second, right.
Okay, okay, very good. Right away, if the right-of-way is full, taken by MetroNet, are there opportunities for other providers to now use that right-of-way? Are, is that pretty much, other providers are next out of that, right, of those areas? Which gets, especially with area you run into, there's only so much area in fact to be put up, so it's based on the capacity. Okay. So it's what is on your... Then is there any joint trenching that is required by MetroNet? One way to extremely reduce your cost as a city is to ask providers to joint trench. That may be something MetroNet doesn't do, is dig once, two companies, three companies can put in conduit, greatly reduces the city's costs, also reduces the provider's cost if they allow that to happen. Some providers don't. I do not know MetroNet's position, they'd be very open to that, but it does encourage a lot of competition in a city and a community.
Just to put hands on that one, for the Davenport side, various, you make some revisions for body of the ordinance that provide opportunities, as they are explored area by area, that where, you know, going in to multiple providers in one conduit, whatever it is, or analyze at that time, ultimately, they are recommended to companies.
Okay. I just found out, I totally understand the request for fiber, then the desire to get fiber, we see that across the state, so we don't discourage that at all. Hopefully, there is room for providers that may not be able to build out the entire Davenport and Bentonmore in three years, but that's my only comment. So I think you do have some good Iowa companies that provide that service. We've been doing it for seven years to many communities successfully. So I hope you allow for that, not just the, you have to build out both the complete cities on both sides, so just fine, kind of, but congratulations to the cities.
Thank you so much. Anybody else wish to hear?
Thank you. Hello, Mayor Galloway, Mayor Cliff, and Davenport, Bentonmore City Council. First, congratulations on scheduling a joint meeting. I know firsthand how difficult and challenging that can be, and that's a huge one for the Quad Cities when you see this type of regionalism. So for those of you who don't know me, my name's Kate Fodle, I do government affairs for MediaCom, so we're here to hear and listen to what Bentonmore and Davenport are hoping to do. First and foremost, we applaud and encourage and welcome competition into the, into the community. It's good for the Quad Cities, it's good for us, but some points to make sure that aldermen and council members understand, you guys already are a gigabit city. Several times, there were comments made that you want to be a gigabit city. MediaCom actually deployed gigabit services last year to our entire footprint in the state of Iowa. And actually, this year in March, Iowa was rated the number-one state in the country to live in. You might have remembered seeing that, you were probably pretty proud of that, and MediaCom was a huge part of that, because it was also ranked the number-one state for ultra-fast broadband. And that's not just because of companies like MediaCom, it's also companies like ION that have been deploying very fast broadband speeds in Iowa that aren't necessarily fiber solutions. So I think it's important to remember, too, that fibers in the home isn't always the solution for everything. We have many, many miles of fiber throughout Davenport and Bentonmore, and we have been continuing to push faster and faster speeds. Doing everything perfect, obviously, you've already heard from a few people that are looking for different services, but the reality is the consumers have to be the ones to decide that. I think we offer pretty incredible services, and we'll continue to improve what we do. Service delivery, customer service, we know that continues to be a challenge. But we operate in 22 states, and all of our footprint and our entire communities, save a couple that are still need further updates, have gigabit services to the residents. Without them, we dig up any industries. Another question was asked, absolutely, when you're talking going on poles versus underground, absolutely, it's costing. So anyone that tells you it isn't a cost-benefit thing, you go on poles because it's much cheaper than digging underground. Unless you have joint trench opportunities in brand new neighborhoods, that's obviously ideal when that happens, but your new neighborhoods, the utilities are all going underground. And it does become a challenge, the more and more people you can put on your pole, there are weight limits. So the competition is great, but you can only have a certain amount of providers. So we applaud the competition. Obviously, it's concerning, because we built out our entire network with no tax incentives and no help, and we've never asked for that as well. And we're going to continue to push fiber deeper into all these neighborhoods. They're going to completely build out the same network that we have, they're just doing it only with fiber, and our network is fiber and coax. That's basically the main difference. But gigabit speeds can be reached on coax. A lot of people think you have to have fiber to have gigabit, and that's just simply not true. That's why we've already deployed that. It's just with better technology. And that's the thing about broadband, it continues to change. I mean, we used to have dial-up, and now we're talking about gigabit speeds, but the reality is, most of your residents won't need that yet, so that is well ahead of the curve. And on the business side, we provide fiber direct to the crumb as well, so we've already been doing a lot of that in the community, so I don't want you to think that you don't have fiber, you don't have gigabit speeds, because that's not true. We'll continue to compete and provide and improve what we do, and a lot of it comes into town. So we appreciate your time, we're always here to work with the city as well. We've been meeting with Jeff many times, obviously, both mayors know me well, so you know how to come to me if there's any further issues and anything we can do to improve our service. So I appreciate all your time, good luck in your future endeavors. I hope you have, I hope someday to see a lonely rock island, Davenport, Bentonmore, peaceful means in a council meeting, that would be pretty incredible. So thank you all for your time.
Thanks, Kate.
Stay tuned, we're working with Davenport Communications, and those meetings are coming.
I know.
Is there anyone else? Thank you, Kate. Is there anyone else with any questions?
Seeing, we're going to move forward, if you'll notice, our agenda, item number five is, we would entertain for the Davenport elected officials, a motion for item number one, and item number three, recommending discussion or consent for Davenport's city council agenda on August 22nd. Just to make this simpler, I would ask for a discussion item, if we could. So if there's a, there's a motion, is there a second thing? Alma Rossin has a second. Let's do, because of the, we're going to do a voice vote, but I think we'll do a voice vote. If any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. We will move that on to our meeting of August 22nd.
And we're going to meet on the 21st, so I entertain a motion for items number two and four to come up for discussion at that time.
Number two, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will both take up these items for further discussion. Our council agenda is August 21st for Bentonmore, August 22nd for Davenport. Anything else for the go-to the ordinance evening?
Oh, Your Honor, thank you. And again, thanks for all your positivity, thanks, and all the teamwork in bringing this together, and thank all of our elected officials for coming together. This is kind of fun, let's do this.
Entertain a motion or adjourn?
No.
Stand adjourned, thank you all for being here.
I probably find my symbols for my, I need to do as well. It's a move in second, and all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Any opposed, same sign.